So first item on the agenda is acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence. Helena, did we get any correspondence?
I do not. I have to check, but I don't think so. I I thought we did not. I will say no.
Yeah, I didn't think so either. At this time, we will allow public comments for items that are not on the agenda with a limited time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Chewbacca Road easement review. An opinion from the planning board regarding the project is needed prior to the November 15th town fall meeting. And with us tonight is Brad Mustang from Woodard and Curran, the engineer on the project. And Brad, I do have the slides if you wanted me to present, or are you just speak? Do you need the slides or not?
Um, well, we can put the slides up, I guess. We could speak from that, or I could share it as well.
Okay, I can make your co-hosts hold on.
Ron, are we gonna, we've already seen a presentation, I believe, on the nature of this subject. Are we gonna not have a presentation now, but just some images?
I think there's like eight slides. I don't think we've had a presentation on this.
I know I've attended two. Maybe it was the Board of Selectmen.
Wasn't the planning board.
Okay. We've done this presentation a few times, so I wouldn't be surprised if a few of you have seen it out there. Can we see my screen yet at all?
Yeah, you're on, Brad.
Okay, so we're talking about the Chewbacca Road infrastructure improvement projects. With here, I believe we got Tim Olson, the Director of Public Works at Hamilton DPW. And I am Brad Mustang, Technical Manager at Woodard and Curran. I'll try. I think most of y'all are familiar with this, so I'll try and be brief as I go through it. I don't want to bore you too much, but going to briefly go over the project, its current status. What really while we're here, well, we're relocating the road and talk about the next steps. And then you can ask some questions. Now, the goals of this project were mostly to improve the condition of the existing roadway out there. It's a lot of loose gravel and the pavement sections that are there aren't in that great a shape. We wanted to improve the safety for vehicles, but importantly, keep the the country road feel out there. We didn't want to put in a bunch of curbing and urban infrastructure. We wanted to limit the impacts to woods and any native species out there, reduce sediment, runoff from the gravel road into gravelly pond, and improve the stormwater management where possible, where we had room. Now, our project starts way over here at Essex Street. It's going to start with mostly a mill and repave, and it's going to end over here right past the landfill at the Manchester by the Sea Town Line. And we're doing almost two miles of roadway we're putting in there. Now, the first about 7,730 feet is just a milling overlay job. We're going out there just scraping off the existing asphalt and giving us a new surface. After that, we have the section of the road we're relocating. And then we are doing a full-depth reconstruction on the existing gravel road through the end section. This section right here where the end of milling overlay is where we're relocating the road and proposing to put it on Manchester by the Sea property. We are also replacing a couple retaining walls along the road that are just falling out. We had longer versions of that one, but we've gone with a smaller impact. And we're just doing a 20-foot section and a 40-foot section. Now, big reason why we're here today is our, where we're moving the road. The red here is the existing layout of the road. It goes right down close to gravelly pond and with the gravel surface. So any, getting a lot of wash out in there, so it ends up with a lot of the gravel road into gravelly pond. There is also a 1964 right-of-way that's in yellow that they made, well, in 1964, but they never moved the road there. I think a lot of it was objections of the homeowners in the area. And then there's a lot of exposed rock ledge in that area we're trying to avoid as well. And that is what the green line where we're proposing to put the road seeks to mitigate is seeks to miss the ledge that's out there and give a little bit of cushion in between the existing houses and where we're going to put the road. Now, where we're at right now, we have order conditions from the town of Hamilton. We met with the Board of Selectmen on March 1st. I guess that's where we saw the presentation before. And we sent the ENF to MIPA in June 20th, and we've gotten approval from MIPA in March. Hamilton, Woodard and Curran, we're in the process of finalizing the design plans and specs. We're meeting with the pub, met with the Hamilton public on April 29th. And town of Hamilton, we got approval with them on May 1st. Now, the existing gravel roadway is located within a conservation restriction area. And the proposed land transfer between the Hamilton is covered under Article 97, the Massachusetts Constitution. So we're going to need the support of this board to be able to move forward on their Article 97 guidelines. As we saw, there's a couple right-of-ways over there right now, the one, the existing road and where we're putting the 1964 right-of-way. And obviously, we've chosen neither of those, so we're going to put it in a new location. And I think that's that's most of the project. I think you guys are mostly familiar with what we're doing out here. We're going to transfer to the town of Manchester about the 44,726 of the 64 right-of-way, the existing right-of-way at 31,000, and we're asking for 33,530 for the new right-of-way, giving you a total of 42,000, almost 500, I guess, new real estate to Manchester by the Sea. The next steps are to draft the Article 97 documents, more town meetings where you probably get to hear this presentation a few more times, draft the legislation and anticipate a bid hopefully in the next few weeks. And construction hopefully August, December time period of this year. Something tells me we're probably not going to start in August. Do I have any questions? I know I went fast, but I think this is a subject most of you guys are familiar with.
Any questions from the board?
Ron, can you hear me? Am I muted? I'm good. Ron, this is Christine.
Yeah, Christina, go ahead.
Um, so I I've actually been following this, and I do, and I am pretty familiar with this. So I guess the bottom line, and I just, this has been my question when I've been looking for some documentation. Manchester purchased this land, and it's in this conservation restriction to protect gravelly pond. So I guess I would like some documentation, some something saying that this being moved is going to, bottom line, protect gravelly pond. I understand that Hamilton would like this road paved, but we did purchase it to protect the pond. So I'm just not seeing all the facts at this point. So there's a lot of required stormwater plan.
Christina, you're following, something's
Can't hear it.
You're breaking up.
So this is why I don't share my camera. Hold on a second. So let me see if I stopped sharing my camera. So I've actually done a bit of research on this project, and I pulled up the NOI. Manchester is not listed as the owner on the NOI. With that, the terms of conditions, you know, the owner of the property is responsible for best practices. We are the owners, so I'm missing, I'm not seeing that documentation. I'm not saying that I'm not for this. I just need to see some more, maybe some procedures followed. The Chewbacca Road is a scenic road. I don't see where the Hamilton Planning Board has addressed the tree issue. I mean, this, this property was purchased to protect the road. If this road is paved, in my opinion, that would create increased traffic. Increased traffic does not, in my opinion, protect gravelly pond. I just, I need a little more, I don't know, for better words, being sold on this. Right now, to me, low traffic on a gravel road, I mean, maybe does not encourage that road to be used as a thoroughfare. We're talking about black earth right there. We're talking about potential 50 units on the other side. This is a high recreation road. I mean, a paved road, more trailers with boats. Bottom line, I'm just interested in what's in the best interest for our major supply of drinking water. So I understand that this might be a great and important thing for Hamilton, but is it the best? Is it the best thing for gravelly pond is my question. And maybe that we need to use some 53G money and make sure that it is. I mean, I know that Hamilton has done this work, but I mean, is the planning board happy with what's been done? The order of conditions is very minimal. I, we haven't heard from our Conservation Commission on this. I just feel like there's some steps that we need to maybe pause and back up and take a look at this. Once this road is paved, we can't go back.
Right, so can I answer that, Tim Olson, DPW Director? You know, we're here, Brad and I are here tonight to obviously answer your questions. You know, this is a project that the town of Hamilton voted pretty much unanimously at town meeting. Gave us, gave the town about a million dollars to do this project. So it's, it's pretty, you know, in Hamilton's mind and the residents' minds, a pretty important project to get to see through. Obviously, there is two towns involved. You know, we can definitely, you know, we have some time now that we have, you know, to to come before you as well as wait for the town meeting, I believe, the fall for Manchester. We have some time to to go through this. I know the next steps with Woodard and Curran are looking at the Article 97, but also the stormwater plan. Since we're impacting over an acre of property, we have to do a whole full stormwater impact study, stormwater management plan, I believe it is. Brad correctly phoned wrong. But yeah, so that's, that's coming. We, we want to make sure that we have the go-ahead before, in my opinion, before Hamilton spends more money with, with our engineer. If this is not going to be supportive by Manchester, you know, we, we want to cut ties. We want to make sure that we're not spending money that's not going to be for, you know, improved project in the, in the end. So we have some time on this, you know, if, you know, I did send some, I can send some information over. We do have the, like, the NOI. We do have a stormwater excerpt from that. You know, whatever Manchester would like to see, we are more than willing to comply and get you that information. So like I said, some of that information is yet to be, you know, yet to happen. We wanted to make sure that, like I said, we want to make sure that we are going forward and both communities are in support of this project. I can tell you that right now, the majority of the problem that we have out there, and today, we just regraded the roadway, finally dried out enough for us to do the work, is erosion and sediment control. You know, and that erosion and sediment falling into gravelly pond. It's so close to that pond side, anything, and that's where the water's trying to get to. Large rainstorms that we've had over the last month have contributed to a lot of erosion and sediment loss. We had to put in, and I can get you the material cost, but I, I know we had to put in considerable amount of material on that road today to get that to grade, to get a safer traffic. My point is, in this whole thing, is if we can pave the roadway, it's a permanent, it's a permanent fix. We are also part of this is we have to adhere to all the sediment and/or stormwater controls. So with the paving of the project also comes with stormwater features. We are planning to put a swell on the side of the roadway as well as on both low points, detention facilities or drainage facilities, so to capture the water prior to it going into gravelly pond. So we would percolate into the soil and eventually migrate to the pond instead of just going overland flow from the gravel pond or gravel road today into the pond. So we are creating stormwater BMPs that are not there today. Yes, it's a paved road. Yes, there, there may be traffic, but I think the biggest concern to Manchester's water source is the amount of sediment that's actually getting into the pond today. So bringing that landward, another 300-plus feet, I believe it is, we are gaining that space. We are also planning to take the, the portion of roadway that we are, we are clearing. We are looking to reestablish the forest on the existing gravel part of the roadway. So we are scarifying the gravel roadway and then dressing that area with the topsoil and all the seeds and vegetation that we remove from where the new road will be. We're bringing that over to that area to reestablish the forest, native species as best we can there. You know, that's the whole, we're shifting the road landward away from the pond to give time for detention, time for what stormwater percolation to water quality. Let nature do its thing by the time it gets from where the road is going to be to where it gets to the pond. It's got some time to, to, you know, to filter out a lot of that sediment. And we have those features to capture it that are not there today. So I don't disagree with you. I think we have some work to do going in front of a couple of these. If we need to go in front of the Manchester's Concom, we'd be happy to do so. Obviously, the, the committees and boards in Hamilton, they're well aware of the project. We just wanted to make sure, like I said earlier, we want to make sure that we're going down the right road and getting both towns involved, getting opinions and questions and comments before, and hopefully gain approval before we, as Hamilton, go in, out and spend additional money to, to get this project put together.
Any other, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I do, Ron.
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
I think Christine made some good points. I, I think those are, those are issues. But I also think you've satisfied them pretty well in your explanation, Tim. Those are relevant points, but I think it's a net gain for gravelly pond. It's sort of intuitively so by looking at the plans, but when you talk about putting swales in and having a detention system and then more forest in between the road and the pond, that's like as kind of as good as it can get. You will have more traffic, but I don't think it's going to have an environmental impact. So those are good questions, but I think you have some good answers. I don't know about the town administration. Are they requesting you go before the Concom as a courtesy anyhow? Because that seems, may not be regulatory requirement, but it, it would seem the right thing to do. But I wouldn't wait, personally, I wouldn't wait to vote on this until I heard something from the Concom. I'm ready to vote on this.
Yeah, like I said, if there's, I'm just trying to satisfy everybody's questions. And, and if there are people, maybe some of those Concom members were on some of the Board of Selectmen meetings. Maybe they are aware of the project. We, you know, obviously, we, we're butters. We want to, you know, work together on this. It's kind of a strange situation that we have here. We don't see this every day. But obviously, there's a net gain to Manchester with the conservation land. I think Brad said about 42,000 square feet gaining back to Manchester.
Any other comments from the board?
I have a question, a couple of questions.
Sarah.
Um, clarify for me if, if you could, just what is the motivation for Hamilton to want to do this? What's, what's motivating you? Besides, I can understand the structure, we're playing the structures. Is it to, to be able to pave it so that you have, you reduce your costs or it's better for residents? Or what's the motivation?
I think it's, I think all of that. I mean, it's a road. Obviously, I'm biased, DPW Director. We've got guys out there, tremendous amount of time to, you know, it's a public roadway that's gravel. We don't, there's not many of those. We have three in town, but you know, you look at other towns, they don't have a lot of public gravel roadways. A lot of them are built to a town standard, city standard. We have constant issues with, you know, potholes, maintenance work. There's expense to that. We do have our landfill out there that we open to residents during, you know, brush, brush days. But a lot of the reason why we don't open it more is because of the condition of the roadway. We've also had public safety issues. We have full support from our public safety divisions for response units. Mail, the mail office, post office, as an occasion, or maybe even, maybe before my time, but I know during my time threatened not to deliver mail because of the way the road is. Bus service, we have full support from some of the residents out there because of bus service. They're not, they don't go down the gravel road because of the condition, so they're forced to bring their kids down further towards the, I believe they pick up at the boat ramp. You know, a lot of that, I mean, my job is obviously to get these roads put together and keep them in good shape. And, and the last thing I need on my conscience is a road that's not, and you know, they can't get to a certain person. And, you know, there's, there's some, you know, I take pride in that to make sure that that road's in good shape. And, you know, the amount of rain that we've gotten, if, if it's wet and muddy, we can't work the road. We can't grade it. It would turn into a sloppy mess that we can't, it actually would, would be more detrimental. So, you know, recreational, there is quite a bit of traffic that, you know, from Hamilton or from maybe from somewhere else that likes to use the boat ramp and Chewbacca, Chewbacca Lake there. Chewbacca Woods is on this, so we are looking to do, part of this job is making new roads, some additional road, road shoulders for additional parking because we've had parking issues. The road, as you can see in some of these pictures, is, is not in great shape. Some of the areas that we're looking to do a milling overlay. We are looking to do a consistent width throughout the whole way, so it, it does create a country feel with some, some contour and curves to keep the, the traffic down with additional signage. We do also have some, you know, quite a bit of, we're looking to do some more crosswalks because we have people coming in, you know, across where Chewbacca Woods is and where Beck's Pond is. So there's a lot of recreation out here, not alone, not just public safety, but recreation that we are looking to try to, you know, there's a reason why the road looks the way it does, even in the paved section. There's a lot of traffic that goes through there because people like to use Chewbacca. That, that's a beautiful spot for some people, and we want to, I'm looking at it just to make the road safe, a town standard. Yes, it does reduce our maintenance costs. At the same time, it provides, you know, public safety, their, you know, the road for them to, to be able to, to, to access. Like I said, bus service, things like that. So we have full, a lot of support from the butters. I've been working, talking with them periodically.
Tim, can I, can I interrupt? I think, I think that answers Sarah's question. I, I don't think we need to hear, you know, any other questions from the board.
About two years now, so.
Can I ask another question, Ron?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I, I, I understand the gravel road issues. I happen to have had a lot of experience with gravel roads at one point in my career. But anyway, and I appreciate the additional, I think, moving this road away from gravelly pond. It does have the benefits that you have to gravelly pond. So the question is, if we don't approve this, would you use the existing red line road? Or is there some reason that, I mean, are you going to do it anyway using that existing red? Or, well, I guess in this picture it's green.
Well, we, we would like to get approval, of course. It would be a little silly to not do this part and do the first, the before and after, which is, you know, fully in the right-of-way of, in town of Hamilton property. You know, I think the benefits outweigh.
No, I understand the benefits. I'm just trying to see if, if we don't give our blessing, and it's going to happen anyways, then it seems to make sense, kind of a no-brainer, that we would give our blessing to have a better outcome is what I'm trying to get to. But if, because if we don't give our blessing and you can go ahead and do the, the road on the existing footprint, then for sure, we should move ahead with the improved location is my point.
Yeah, and I don't have an answer for you if I can force the hand or not. I, I didn't want to do that, so I don't have an answer for you tonight on that.
I'm not asking you to blackmail us. I'm just trying to point out to our colleagues that if we don't go ahead, then we're going to get something worse than the, than the plan as it, as it is, as they're asking us to present, to approve, I think.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to endorse?
Ron, this is Mary. I have a few questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Um, could you tell us how much land clearing you would need to do on the Manchester conservation land for the road?
It looks like in the plan about 33,000 square feet.
So do you, I mean, that looks like a densely wooded area. How, you know, is that taking down all those trees?
Well, there, there are trees that would have to come down, but part of the, our alignment that we have here is try to minimize the amount of trees.
So, okay. And, I mean, I, I have to agree with the questions that Christine were asking. I think it would be good if we could understand our Concom's viewpoint on this. Maybe the Chewbacca Woods Committee of the two towns, if we could hear from them, what, what they have to say. Obviously, there's proposed development on and off at Gordon College, which is right near there, and on Essex Road in Hamilton. And so this would be more highly trafficked, so I think it's good to understand with this gravelly pond being one of our main drinking water supply sources, to have some of those further documentations and conversations.
And any other comments from the board?
So, Ron, I have a comment on what Sarah's proposal was. This has to go in front of the DEP, and in my opinion, I'm not the DEP. They would not propose paving on that green line because of the wetlands. And I actually, I mean, there's another question. I've heard rumors, and I'm just going to ask them. So is the, has there been conversations, Tim, between Manchester and Hamilton to rate, to lay water pipes along this new road that would come from, or a source of coming from gravelly pond or the adjacent pond?
So there's always talk, you know, alternative water sources, you know, with Hamilton. You know, we are in the Ipswich River Basin. Manchester's in north coastal. You know, I think a long time ago, there was talk that Manchester or Hamilton would come up and connect to the water plant. I believe there's even a tap in there, some type of, is what I've been told, is some type of hookup for Hamilton. So maybe that was planned back in the day. Maybe it wasn't. I don't know. It's not something on my near future. It's not something, you know, out of our alternatives, our water source alternatives. It's, it's not first. It's, it's, it's down on the list. You know, so there is a bit of time that we, you know, we're not going to be building this road and then next year coming out and doing the water main. So that's why we're going forward with the paving now, because we know it's a long-term. If that is the case, that would be a long-term solution, long-term planning. So I, not at this time. It's something that we talked about. I think both towns have talked about it over the years, but we don't have any plans at this time to move forward with that.
Okay. I'd like to hear a motion on this, whether to endorse this project.
I move to endorse the project, Ron.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I, I would just say we, I, I don't feel like we have enough information yet.
Okay, any other discussion?
Ron, the NOI does not have Manchester listed as the owner. I mean, this is so premature. For us to vote on this would be, in my opinion, unwise, and
The motion is okay. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
I'll take a roll, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
No.
Ms. Ms. Foley?
No.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Only?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes five to two. Four to Motion passes five to two, four to two. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks. Okay, next item. Blasting article process guidelines. Greg was, there was a question at our last meeting about blasting procedure. Gary had the question. Greg is not here, unfortunately, tonight to explain it, but he did send an email to all of us tonight. To explain it a bit, I'll just read it for the record. The amendment to the earth removal bylaw voters approved at the June annual town meeting. The bylaw calls for the development of blasting guidelines that the planning board will use in reviewing projects for blasting. He recommends a small working committee be formed, and I agree, to work with the fire chief clearing on the development of the guidelines. So he believes we should adopt the state regs as our guidelines, plus with a few additions that we may want to add. And that could possibly be in certain chemicals as blasting agents and possibly larger monitoring radius. So I think what I'll do when we meet as a full board in August is form that subcommittee. And we'll take it from there. Any further discussion on that? I, I just, with Greg not here, I, I mean, I think that's where we want to go.
Ron, I just wanted to get some clarification, like I mentioned last time. I don't understand, this is not really our bailiwick. It's like the, to me, it's like the fire department and the DPW have more expertise on it. They should get together and make recommendations, it seems to me anyhow, to Greg or slash the Board of Selectmen. Because what do we know about, it's not really land use regulation in a sense. But I could be wrong and it could be a normal thing that planning boards regulate.
I, I understand your concerns and that's why I wanted Greg to explain that. Sue, do you have any further information on that?
I, I would just say that it's not something that we really have a, a choice on. Because it was a town meeting vote for the planning board to make these regulations. We can debate whether we think we should be, but I think if we think that, just as we are asking the fire chief to be on that committee. If, if we think that anyone on the DPW has anything to add, we could add them. But I think we're mandated to write those, to propose those regulations and get them into our regulations.
Okay, any other comments? I can move on. All right, the next item is a ten Forest Lane A and R, and is Mr. Collins here to explain or representative?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Collins, yeah, there you are. Your floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much and thanks everyone for considering our application for A and R. My wife and I bought ten Forest Lane six years ago. It is represented in the assessors map thirty-seven lot nineteen. It is one point seven two acres and it's separated in, in two grades. There's kind of like an upper level of the lot and a lower level. And in May, the zoning board approved our application for variance to split the lot. Thus creating a new buildable lot, which is half of an acre, fully conforming. And then a second lot, which, where our existing house and garage and shed are. We did include in our application our surveyor's site plan showing lot one, which is where our existing house is. And lot two, which would become a new half acre lot. This, the zoning board, as I said unanimously approved and they've filed their, their approval. We're in front of you for, for an A and R. We will be back next month for an application for the new driveway and curb cut. We kind of didn't have time to get all our eggs. In a row, so we'll have to come back next month, I apologize for that, for that application. But in any event, the, I, I haven't been in this process, I don't know, are there any questions or any information that we did not include? We did request the input from the, the planning board and the ZBA regarding the information we needed to include in the site plan.
Yeah, we had, I had Gary Gilbert vet this. Gary, would you want to make any comments on what you found?
It's another one of those A and Rs where we have no reason to, we have no legal right to really say anything about it. These are legal, legally created lots, the zoning board of appeals gave them a variance for not, not having adequate frontage on one of the lots. But our determination really is, is, is the way that services these lots adequate, and it obviously is. The street is, it's been around a long time. They have access to the lot, there's not much more we have to say about it. So I recommend that we just endorse this plan.
Sue, any other additional comments?
I do not have any additional comments.
Any further, is there a motion then?
I do have a quick question, is the plan stamped? I, I, I'm looking at it online, so it's a little hard to tell. Oh, yeah.
Copy I have Sarah's stamped in the left side by Kirk Benson.
Yeah, thank you. I'll take a motion to endorse the plan for ten Forest Lane as an approval not required.
Okay, it's A and R eight twenty-two, you want to enter that into your, your.
As amended.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Take a roll call vote. Ms. Creighton?
I.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Only?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, approve, Mr. Collins.
Thank you very much. Could I, could I ask Mr. Gilbert and the board a question since Mr. Gilbert actually looked through the, the plan? When we come back for your August twentieth meeting requesting the driveway and curb cut. Is there any additional information that we haven't already provided that we would need to get approval for that?
Well, I should contact the DPW, they have draft regulations for approving curb cuts. And I think it's pretty explicitly laid out in this draft regulation.
If the application states what you need to provide.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tell him, he's going to pick up the Milar from you.
Oh, yes, Mr. Collins, the Milar is available. I will sign it and it's available for pickup. I will email you my address or Helene will mail, email you my address and you can come pick it up in town.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item, update on the LCD overlay district study. Sue, you asked me to, while you were on vacation, you asked me to add this, so I assume we have some additional informations.
Yes, thank you. So I uploaded to SharePoint last week the updated plan. In response to the questions and comments at the last meeting. And Chris Kuchel from MAPC, our consultant, is here to ask any questions. I know there were a couple of questions on, on process. I will note, and I'm sure Chris will discuss, there were a couple of things that weren't updated on the plan. Excise tax, that's not readily available, and there's, and some other information. But hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at the updated plan. And I think I'll just open it up to leave it up to Chris to ask, answer any questions that folks might have. Does that work?
It sounds good, Sue. I'll throw it out to the board, any questions, Ms. Foley? By the board, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Ask some questions on the updated part, Chris?
Sure, I'll try and answer.
Okay, thanks. I was looking at the table that was added the assessed value by use per scenario. And I wasn't able to calculate out how you went from the balanced growth to the low growth. So like, for example, the, for the balanced growth for the hotel, it was a hundred and fifty rooms and the low growth was eighty rooms. So with the hundred and fifty rooms, it was an assessed value of six point six million. If I go and take eighty of the hundred and fifty, that's a point five three factor. So if I take that six point six million times point, point five three, I don't get four point five million. And I'm just wondering how those calculations were working.
Okay, I'm just going to scroll to my, my spreadsheet here and just take a, take a quick look at that.
Because I get a three point five two million for the low growth. So when it kind of does that with all the others, so with the mixed use housing, the assisted living, I can't calculate out those numbers.
Okay, so for the hotel, we had it as a thirty-four thousand square foot building. And it was based upon the square footage. And so that was the thirty-four thousand square feet times the, the assessed value per square foot that we had.
Okay, so you were using square feet as opposed to units per se?
Correct.
Okay, oh, great. And then, and so if you, I guess, do that with the mixed use. It's looking like the average home value is six hundred and thirty thousand, is that correct?
The, sorry, I'm just trying to. So for the mixed use, we have, that was, it did, that didn't strip out, separate the housing portion from the commercial portion. It was just the mixed use building and that, that came to three hundred and one dollars per square foot. So that was applied, that three hundred dollars was applied to both the commercial and the residential.
Are those figures, just so I don't want to take other people's time, are those figures in this document so that I know, like, it's three hundred and one per square foot?
I thought I included that, but if not, yes, so that is included, it's on page sixteen of it. So I have what the comparable was, and then I have the total assessed value, the building size, and then therefore the value per square foot.
All right, great. Then I wanted to ask, so there's a scenario for the life science building, which is life sciences. Building, which is five hundred thousand square feet, which. Quakes still almost eleven and a half acres, if you're, if you're spreading it out. So I'm assuming you're doing like a two story building, but that's still, you know, six acres. I don't know that that's really a true scenario that we would be looking at.
Yeah, and I think that the reason we had modeled this was because that was sort of, I guess, my understanding, and Sue could jump in. Was that there was some potential interest of, of creating a, a building of, of that size potentially on this site. This, this was no way intended to sort of endorse that, but it was to see, could it even fit? And so that's what part of this was, it was like you had realized probably it was a two story building. I think there was even one portion that might have been, I think part of it was three stories and the part was two stories. So it was, it was condensed a little bit more than just two stories, since portions of the area was three stories. But yes, it does, it does take up, when you include the parking, it takes up quite a bit of, of the district, what would be.
Yeah, I mean, so the, obviously the board can decide, but I, it would be nice if we could bring it to an actual real life scenario. So we could truly analyze the difference, different factors with that. And then my only other comment would be that it's stated in here that the DPW trips and the playing field trips. Would be low and, and not relevant, and I, I do think they would be relevant, so if we could try to get numbers for those.
Yeah, well, so for the DPW trips, it's not in my mind that it wouldn't, it's just irrelevant, but it's, it wouldn't really be. Fair to add that because you already have a DPW, so these aren't new trips, unless you're drastically expanding your DPW. These are trips that are already occurring in town and they're just being relocated to this area, so. I'm sorry.
Agreed, it's just a different, it's a higher traffic street that it would be relocated to. So I think that traffic angle needs to be looked at.
Okay. I, I will see, you know, this wasn't in the scope, I, I had someone who was able to pull these numbers, I don't have access to this. I will see if that person can pull numbers, if they even do it for DPW, they, they probably do. And I'll also, at the same time, ask about recreational trips. I honestly can't guarantee that we'll be able to get that, but I'll, I'll do my best. But I also do think, you know, again, with, with the recreational, I, I think the point that I made is one, just to consider that when these trips occur. Matters, and so these trips are likely not occurring, for example, during your morning rush hour, when you have, when you would have a lot of traffic otherwise. So it's, it's sort of a different, it tends to be at different times and it tends to not be every single day. You know, if you have these trips on a weekend when most sort of ballgames are, that, that's different because that's not when the offices are open. But that being said, I'll, I'll see if I can track those numbers down.
Yeah, and if it's not in scope, that's totally fine, I just, I just, from my viewpoint, it, it is important, but, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Chris. Any other comments, Sarah? Is your hand up or?
It is, yeah. My questions, and Chris, thank you for coming tonight or taking time tonight. With your permission, Ron, I'd like to ask Chris a couple of questions that aren't related to his study. But maybe we can use his time tonight just to ask two quick questions, is that okay? The first is, just to comment on the likelihood of those scenarios actually happening. Particularly, and, and what planning board's role is in terms of helping to see those scenarios come through. Just sort of briefly, and then I have a second question, so if you can. The second one is unrelated, so.
Okay, so you, you are asking what I think the likelihood of the scenarios and what the plan, what I think the planning board's role is in sort of shepherding that. Okay, well, I, I guess, I would say that the planning board's role is to help create sort of the, help. A, implement the town's vision, so the town already created this vision or aspects and recommendations through your recently adopted master plan. I think one of the key areas for helping to implement the vision is. Helping to draft and help shepherd through zoning that is relevant, that helps create the vision. And, and I think that's sort of what we've been, oh, I've been working with Sue on and, and my meetings with, with you all, has been towards that, that goal. I think that's kind of like the, the main role is to help implement the, what is the town's vision. It's not necessarily to implement your own vision, although of course we take very much into consideration, given your role, what your opinions are. And so we try to make those changes. I, I think the likelihood of these different scenarios, I, I think the life sciences scenario is really a sort of. All of your eggs in one basket type of scenario. I've, I've worked closely with my economic development colleagues and we've done research. And, and we just don't think it is highly likely. I know that there has been some interest by one potential company. And, and I, I understand that that could happen, but I, I just feel like if it doesn't happen, then you're, you have nothing. And I think the likelihood of it happening is, is kind of low. I think Manchester is not a typical site where you would see a, a facility of this nature, given its location. I think that creating a mixed use sort of village-like scenario has a high degree of, of likelihood of implementation. I think what we've been trying to do is something that's a little bit more outside the box. So I think it would push developers maybe beyond what they are typically used to. So if you were, for example, in Avalon, you, you almost have sort of a kit of what you do. In terms of the design and the mix of uses and whatnot. And I think we're pushing things, not in a way that's unrealistic by any means, but it's just a little bit, like I said, more outside the box than I think is typically done. And the reason we're doing that is because I think a lot of the standard suburban growth, even when it's done as sort of a quote unquote. Mixed use way tends to not really create that neighborhood, that place, sense of place that really kind of, I think, is sort of the ideal. And so that's what we've been trying to do. That being said, I think it's highly implementable. I think it's not, we're not, it's not too great of a scale, at least in terms of. at least in terms of implementation. I mean, it might be for, from your perspective, in terms of what you think fits, but I think it is a, um, a, a realistic scenario.
Okay, so you're saying we create uses, we regulate them in a way that we want to see things happen and we move that forward in that way.
Yes, with the caveat that I think it's best done when it's done in a more flexible manner. So you create like the range of uses and sort of maybe, let's say, the limit of development that you would allow, the number of units that you just can't, you know, live more than that. But I think you really, in order to be implementable, needs to have some flexibility for a developer to sort of take into account um, just onsite conditions, financial feasibility, things like that. But yes, essentially, yes.
And then the second question is unrelated, but just use your professional expertise, which I assume is as a planner, which I am generalist planner. But, um, in your experience, if there was housing out there in, in, you know, seventy units, that has one access point that's four tenths of a mile long, is that a problem for safety?
When you say a problem for safety, what, what would be?
Is that a best practice, or is there some, uh, is there some best practice that is not, that would not allow in general, single access of, of more than, I'm probably approaching a half mile by the time you get up in there?
Um, no, not that I know of. I don't think there's any major concern. I mean, again, if you're talking about an ideal situation, you usually want, you know, the ideal situation is more of like almost multiple access points, egress and whatnot, but I, I don't think there's any, I think it's actually not that uncommon to have a situation like this, where you would have that type of, um, single access point. So I, I would not consider that an overly concerned issue.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Chris? Chris, about Gary? Sorry.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, I still feel that the projections for tax revenue are kind of low. Um, I talked a bit with, I mean, there's a lot at play with this. We don't know from the selectmen, they haven't given us indication if we might have a second tax, uh, tax rate if we have a substantial amount of commercial over a certain size, so that the downtown would be exempt. But also, the projections just seem, well, it's complicated to figure out. Projections seem low. I also sort of feel that, uh, we could over time, there, there will be a continued need, I think, for commercial. Uh, there's a lot of healthcare in the area. There's a lot of use, a lot of tenants that the Cummings property has, that I think some of them might be quite happy to have Manchester by the Sea as their letterhead. Um, I was told this by the president of Windover years ago, Lee Delicker. He made it clear. He said if that area was allowed, opened up for reasonable development, that plenty of people would really take pride in putting their, you know, a small portion of their office there, what have you. So I feel more optimistic about the, um, over time. But again, I think this is the kind of thing where we allow, as you said, a range of uses, and we just see what developers propose. But we prepare ourselves by developing regulations for each of those uses, which is what land use reg, regulations are. And we also developed some guideline, got, design guidelines that we're happy with, and you've already given us some good models for that. And I would caution you to use the word village. Let's start using the word neighborhood, because when nobody's wanting to create a separate village, it's going to be a rarefied neighborhood that we're going to try to fine tune, so it's not a completely mixed use. It's going to be a partially mixed use, the way I see it anyhow. That it's going to ta, we're going to tailor it to our needs. I think that's the direction we should go. But I want to ask you, having said all that, I want to ask you your take on something I asked the housing consultant we had, was can we effectively manipulate the market in terms of housing by developing design guy, uh, design regs, land use regs, that sort of forces small, uh, small apartments or small townhouse condos in order to get price points down? So we have something that approaches the missing middle, I call it, you know, the small A affordable. Is that, is that an effective tool that towns have used? Because I, I, I want to find someplace to get hope, where maybe we could do something besides market rate, market rate, market rate? Or of capital A affordable, because those are two extremes that just drive me crazy.
Yeah. I, I think that the strategy that, at least we've been going down the path of, of these cottages, is that, is, I think, hitting on, on what you're looking for, because these cottages, we can literally, and I think, I can't recall off the top of my head what we have in the bylaw, but I, I think we actually capped what their size would be. So let's say it was fourteen hundred. Um, now, I will say, I know from, from the example in Concord that they're very popular and these, you know, fifteen hundred square foot homes are still very expensive. However, when you're comparing it to the rest of Concord, they're actually not. I mean, when you still take that same price per square foot, instead of having a thirty-five hundred square foot home, you have fifteen hundred. And that's, so the term, you know, that we, that I hear is called naturally occurring affordable housing. And so it's naturally occurring because it's not deed restricted, it's market rate. But there are mechanisms to try and get it to be more affordable. And I think, and I think the best lever, again, I'm not a housing expert, I'd be interested to know what the the housing consultant said, if they had an alter, alternative take on this, but I, I think the, the mechanism is to ensure that these are cottages, or whether it's part of a mixed-use building, because again, when you're in a mixed-use building, you're not having three thousand square foot condos in there. They, they're going to be smaller. So again, somewhere usually fifteen hundred is pretty standard. So they're just naturally more affordable than other parts of Manchester.
Thank you.
Chris, I had a question back on the life science scenario. Any special infrastructure needed for wastewater for, for facility like that? I mean, is a septic system acceptable for lab waste, or should it be tied into a municipal system, or do you have any opinion on that?
This is something that I honestly don't know. Um, my very, very limited understanding, which is probably not much more than anyone here, is that life sciences facilities that do types of like wet labs or whatnot, um, have a lot of water issues. So I, I would think it would be a concern, but I, I don't know the answer to that. Um, and I, I did ask internally around, and, and it wasn't something that, that we knew. But it, because it's something that we're, you know, we're not doing much work personally at MAPC on, on this, on doing life sciences sort of zoning or development. So, sorry, I can't give you a better answer.
All right, any other questions for Chris or Sue on the LCD?
On my hand first.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I guess, I just, the general consensus is we have a lot of potential housing developments going on. And so my question is, does this assumption based residential to be apartments, is, is there a program that we can make these for sale, not actually for rent? Is that?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that you cannot require, at least in the zoning, something to be for sale versus for rent, and it's, it's because of, um, federal fair housing rules. Um, and so we can't dictate that. And I don't know any mechanism that can sort of try and persuade that, um, to be condos.
Okay, thanks. And then, um, my second question, I think when the life science person came to the planning board, they were appealing to us to go up to reduce the footprint. So was that considered in this scenario?
In, in this scenario, I considered up to three stories.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure if you were expecting more than that.
So I think they were saying, yeah, maybe three, even four, to reduce the footprint in these environmentally sensitive areas, so.
Yeah, and so just from, you know, again, from the simple diagrams that I put together, I think you could probably use your imagination that some portion of that would be a little bit smaller. Um, and, and I think that would be reasonable to, to, to think.
Uh, final question, and I know we, in our bylaws that we're discussing right now, we have a rate of growth. So is there something that we can, um, maybe long-term, go ahead with some of the housing, but maybe if the forty B and some of the other developments go through faster than we think, put a, a limit on? I mean, obviously, but how do you, what does that look like? Does that make sense? Really, a rate of development, if things come to fruition before this potentially happens, is there somewhere that we can maybe pull back? Is that?
Yeah, one of the, the strategies that we were considering when, back when we were considering this as a forty R district, and that was including the area where the forty, proposed forty B was located, was included as part of that district, was that there would be a total limit within this area on, a, a cap on the total number of units, so that if you hit that cap, whether it was part of the forty B development, or whether it was spread throughout the district, you couldn't go beyond that. So I, I think, you know, within the district, you could still do that, that type of strategy.
Okay. What does that look like, just so I would know for the future?
Well, as part of the forty R, we did it very simply and very explicitly of saying what the, what the units were. I think that one way to do it would be i- if it's, let's say, by right up to, I'm just making the number up, by right up to a hundred and fifty units, at that point, it's either prohibited, or you could say, um, at that point, it's through a special permit, and then you could put some criteria for what that special, you know, what would be, what would, um, you know, allow for, for us to go beyond that hundred and fifty units.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ron? Add something? Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, I've also seen other communities that are doing overlay districts where they've required, um, a certain amount of other mix of uses. So you could have a certain number of housing units um, and then no more until some other uses have been brought in. If you want to try to keep it a true mixed use, um, that's a tool that, or a strategy that could be considered as well.
Thanks, Sue. All right, I think we've, uh, any other questions? I would like to move on since, um, thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciated. And, uh, thanks, Sue.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chris.
Sue, you're up again. Draft open space and recreation plan letter. What are we doing here?
So at, at the last, at the last meeting, we discussed that the open space and recreation plan is, um, at DCS for um, preliminary, um, approval. Um, if they come back with some recommendations, we'll make those changes and consider any other changes that have been requested by the town. Um, and then that'll be ready to move forward for final approval. When it goes into DCS for final approval, it needs to go in with a letter of support from both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. So, um, I was asked to draft a a document for consideration. So that's what was in the, that's what I updated to SharePoint. And I'm not, I don't object to anyone making changes in the wording or tone or, or whatever. It's just a draft for you to consider.
Has, uh, a, anyone read, has anyone have any comments on the draft? I don't know if everyone's read it, but go ahead, Mary.
Um, thanks, Ron. Um, I would suggest adding, um, planning board specific things that we liked about it or supported. You know, whether it's our, um, looking at land protection, or the recreational playing fields, or whatever we decide as a board to do, but I think it would be nice to personalize it as the planning board. And with, and with that, I mean, I, you know, it's a long document, I, the, I think the actual document is maybe a hundred and twenty pages, and then it goes up to four hundred and fourteen pages with all the additional stuff back there. But, um, if somebody or maybe Sue could even just give the highlights of what are the changes from the twenty fourteen open space and rec plan to now. I mean, I think it's the same goals, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's very consistent with, um, the previous one. I'm happy to pull out a few planning board specific items that, that we would be tasked with either leading or being, you know, most of them that we're not the leads on, but we're certainly supportive of many. I'm happy to pull a couple of those out and add it to the text.
Yeah, maybe even the, like, you know, hoping that the planning board can work with the open space, um, and rec committee to achieve some of these goals.
Okay, um, Sue, uh, would you be willing to add those things? Do you need a vote of endorsement from the board tonight on this?
No, no, we have, no, we have time to, it can be manipulated. I'm happy to.
That you would maybe work, work on this a little bit, or is that?
I'm happy to make those changes.
Okay.
Send it back out.
Why don't we do that? Is that acceptable to the board? Like, Sue will make another revision. We'll set, we'll set it up for our next meeting. With Mary's comments incorporated.
Sounds good to me.
All right, thank you. Okay, now the, uh, big thing here, um, the recodification roadmap committee has met and has given us a Sunday late night document. But thank you again for doing this, and I will give, um, an explanation. Uh, have, uh, Chris and Sarah explain how, where they've, how far they've gotten, uh, in the past two weeks. Uh, Sarah or Chris?
Yeah, um, so we said, we gave you four documents, one which we updated. Um, the fir, first, I think, is a, a map that, um, showed in broad terms where each section of the current zoning ends up in the new renumbered, reordered plan. Um, the second is a table of, that summarizes, uh, the allowed uses from section four, I believe. Correct me wrong if I'm wrong, Chris, that, um, we'll talk about in a few minutes. And the third, um, if I can share my screen, Ron, is continuation of our proposed, uh, but perhaps not yet entirely agreed strategy to break the zoning changes into, um, articles um, that we talked about last time, that, for town meeting, that are uh, bite-sized chunks, for lack of a, a better, um, description. Um, so there were two versions to that, and I apologize that we didn't get you the right one. But, um, the current one is the one that, that has more detail. So, um, I just made it bigger so that anybody watching, Laura, or anybody else could sort of follow along. Um, we're not gonna, we're not really ready to get into the weeds on all of it, but, um, the idea to, is to renumber things, fix a few basic things, um, by taking bite-sized chunks, as we talked about last time, we can limit discussions on things we don't want to open up. So for example, I'm pretty sure, we need to talk to Alan Wilson about this for sure, but if you renumber a section and simply limit the warrant to the renumbering, the substance of, of that, um, portion of the zoning cannot be modified, because voters would not have been given due notice that the changing, the setbacks or the provisions in the zoning would be on town meeting floor. The idea too is to create something that could be followed by, uh, people who haven't been following it as closely as all of you and, and me knew recently, um, by giving them the new table of contents as a handout. Um, and each article would be able to be standalone, and as we've talked about, could be described with a purpose, um, and be, um, kind of, just, you know, framed up. And then subsequently, then, the outcome of November would be a framework for more, for some substantive changes in April. Um, I think we anticipate that we can take up some substantive changes as well in November. Um, the other thing is there are provisions that need only a fifty percent vote, those that, uh, deal with housing density. So where those don't require two-thirds, we can break those apart at this, uh, meeting or, or set it up so that they can be easily addressed legally, um, in, so, in the spring. So as we thought through this, we realized that you're, we're gonna ha, miss opportunities to do some of the nuanced wording changes, because our proposal is that we don't take up all of the sections in their entirety in the new version. Um, but we could take those changes up then in the new, uh, reordered uh, zoning. And, you know, no matter what we do, it's going to be confusing. So, um, so then what we proposed, and we, we, uh, in this version, labeled these things, articles A, B, C, because we realized if we use numbers, then the numbers were confused. Because we realized if we use numbers, then the numbers were confusing because they, because the sections of the zoning have numbers. So for the purposes of our discussion, that's why we used letters. Oh, I should also say, um. We took the sort of consensus, um, it seemed that this was consistent with that consensus document that we tried last time. Which is available for everybody to look on, on, uh, SharePoint. Um, so if we just sort of, uh, anything to add just on the preamble, Chris?
Just, uh, a couple of statements. The first is, one way about doing this would be just to delete the old zoning bylaw. And replace it with a new one. That would be pretty simple, but my guess is, well, there are two problems. First, I don't think we have enough time to actually prepare the second bylaw yet. And we'd like to get some of it done, so this would be kind of a head start. The second thing is, my guess is that if we go to town meeting and ask for. A whole new zoning bylaw, there's gonna be all kinds of trouble because no one's gonna understand it. And we're opening up the whole can of worms at once. So the question is, what worms can we pick out of the can? To, uh, to fiddle with, and which one should we leave in the can? And, um, you know, that's something we need to talk about. The other part is trying to get all this done for November, assuming there isn't a town meeting in November, is going to be. An enormous undertaking for us, and so maybe we should just pick off the things we can do and save the harder things for later. One other point, which is, one of the big problems with this was taking definitions out of section two. And moving it to the end. From a numbering point of view, it just changes all the other sections. And it causes a lot of people, a lot of brain problem, uh, trying to figure out what the hell we're doing. So if we just leave section two there, it makes it much easier and much more understandable as to, you know, we're just changing a few things in section three. And we're changing a few things in section six, and we're adding some more sections at the end. Probably, and that's fine. It doesn't renumber four, five, and six to get there. So that's kind of the mindset we, we came to this with. And I don't know whether the rest, everyone else agrees or disagrees.
I guess we're prioritizing the renumbering. That's one of the things that would result. Is that, one of the outcomes is that there would be, the renumbering would be accomplished in, in large measure. Because to do renumbering and, uh, the subs- all of the substantive changes. Seems to be, uh, what, and when you look at the map that Chris put together of what moves where. It's, that in and of itself is confusing. So, so let's just work, if, uh, walk through what we cut. Not, we don't have to take these up, but just to give you a sense that, um, that sections one and two. One would be just replaced, uh, sections two could either be the definitions. Or we could have a, I don't think it matters, a, a new section twelve, which is definition. And just let section two remain intentionally blank. So Chris just described leaving it definitions there. And that means we don't have to renumber section three or section four. Or, um. Section three has a lot of things that can just be replaced in its entirety. Uh, we kind of looked through what made sense. Section four has the table, which, um, predominantly is one through six. And, um. And we can talk about that. And then, um, then we start creating these new sections. Section nine, which would, which is where we take, um, you know, make special districts section. We could address the junk cars, moving those to, um, a general bylaw as another, um, discreet article. And create a, um. Section eleven, which is the administration in its entirety, create new sections, special regulations. And, um, create an energy regulation section, and then also delete the stuff, uh, that's obsolete or illegal. So that would be, you know, whatever those section numbers are in the current version. And so that, well, that's basically, the other thing is if we wanted to. The, the big thing that we haven't yet sort of tackled is what about section six, which is the meat of the matter, right? And some of that, since it doesn't renumber, could be amended. Which is one advantage of this approach, um, especially with the definitions either staying in section two or section twelve. And we could take up accessory dwelling units, the, uh, as I mentioned, the junk cars, the driveways. If we want, but they could be standalone, um, articles for town meeting. So, and the idea is that we would try to have them be either so obviously, you know, procedural. Or could stand on their own. So if there was a vote against one of the articles, it would not, um. Cause a problem with the other articles. They're not, they would not be interdependent. So the thought we had was to actually take this general outline and take the existing bylaw. And do what we track changes and see if it makes sense. Does this get us renumbered roughly? Where the, where the holes, and how do we fix those? Also finalizing the definitions, because if we're gonna replace them in their entirety, uh, we might as well have them correct. And sections one through four are pretty cut and pasted, so we thought with any, any check changes there. And then also getting clarity on any of the changes that only require a fifty percent vote rather than a two thirds. And then I, I, I didn't put it here, but identify the, you know, if we want to include ADU, any, you know, the, the discrete. Improvements on specification, ADU or junk cars or driveways. Flood control came up as a high voting, uh, as one which many of us thought was a priority. I think everybody thought was a priority, um, in the priority ranking. So, um. I'll stop there to just discuss for a moment, then we can, should talk about the table.
There, is there any reason why definitions are at the end? And I'm wondering why I put them at the end, and, you know, is that?
That's what, um, Mark did. I, I think that could be in section two or at the end, either way. But whatever it is, as long as, if we take this approach, it's just so we don't have to renumber every single section that follows, is the.
You would, you would include the new definition.
Yes.
In the, in the, in section two.
Yep, take the new definition, take out the old definitions and, and, um, and insert the new ones.
I think we just had a conversation about that. I mean, it wasn't like, we took a straw poll one day in the beginning where we wanted it. I don't think it really matters, to be honest. I think it's, whatever makes it easiest at this point, I think is what we do.
So when we put the new language in, um, for some of these, I think we need to explain why we're doing that. And what's changed, you know, so there's some work there.
One of the, um, one of the good things about doing it this way is that you can do a, uh, attract changes. Thing for each section independently, and for, for the changes that we want to do, and it's much easier to understand instead of looking at the whole thing.
But, but, you know, that just, that just gets the word changes. Shouldn't there be a little narrative as to why?
Yes, there should be something that says, why are we, why are we proposing this?
Right, so that's a lot of work.
Each, oh, but that's, we're gonna have to do that work. We're gonna have to explain those anyway. So I think it's easier for each of us to take one of these proposed articles and say, I propose article seven. To, um, delete the following sections because they're illegal. Or I want, we, we are, this, this section simply renumbers things in order to. Have the zoning bylaw comply with the table of contents that was handed out to you in the meeting.
Yeah, or junk cars, we want to put that in general bylaw because otherwise you only have to get rid of a junk car if you get a, trying to get a building permit. And that doesn't make any sense, so.
Right, so each of these things can be addressed and explained discreetly, discussed by the meeting as a discreet issue. So we're not talking about junk cars at the same time, we're talking about swimming pools at the same time, we're talking about driveways. Because, um, if those.
I have another meeting I have to go to, um, but, um. I'm a little surprised that between the past meeting where we talked about the same subjects pretty much, and this meeting, that this hasn't been ironed out. Methodically with Alan Wilson. Now, maybe he's not the only person to talk to about it, but I'm just gonna use him. Maybe it's him and Greg or something, him and town council, the time and money is worth it. But I thought some of this, some of what you're talking about is kind of hypothetical as to how the process could work. Why don't you just iron it out so we know how it literally can work?
Well, I wanted to get board, we wanted to get board consensus on this approach. And then I, I, I actually thought that maybe I would go to Alan, and maybe bring Sarah or Chris, and, uh, I would, I would, we would do that.
I think that's the appropriate next step. I think we asked Alan previously how, if he would, and even entertain having, um. Wasn't there a discussion like the, having the full zoning bylaws, and he was. If I, you, you met with him, Ron, not, not I, but, um, he was kind of lukewarm on that, that.
But as, as I understand it now, the approach is, we've got, you know, X number of sections in our bylaw. We're gonna have more sections in the new one. We're gonna, we're gonna reno- renumber and take all our existing language and put it into the new bylaw. But we've got new language we're gonna put in the new bylaw, but the fallback is if, if a couple of those new sections don't pass. We theoretically should be able to keep the old language, but just have it live in a new place in the new bylaw. On that is clear to me. It's kind of simple, and we also do need a narrative. And I'm, I told you before, uh, on a phone call that I was willing to help out to try to trace each of these changes. But if that flies with Alan, can't we get his blessing on that approach?
Yeah, we will. Now that we've vetted it and, uh, the board's in agreement on this approach, I, we, we, we will do that.
Can I also suggest that I know some, um, of you have worked hard on specific issues. Like, I keep saying swimming pools and driveways and junk cars, that, that you pick one of those things, I know Gary ADUs. And, and begin to think of it as a discreet bylaw. So, you know, so cars, what is the art, what is the, you've been, all been to town meeting, you pull out an R L warrant. And say junk cars to, you know, amend the general bylaws, section, whatever that's gonna be. And begin to think about those things so that, and that's a good way for everybody to pick, you know, some of these issues. That we want to advance beyond just the procedural and the renumbering and figuring out with Alan Wilson. Because it's, it, that is a lot. So I, I invite everybody to, uh, pick their favorite issue. And write a discreet bylaw, you know, about where it goes in general bylaws or which things are illegal. And, and, um, really, that's the work now that we have to, and get specific language. How do we advance this at town meeting? Because absent specific language at town meeting, we got nothing.
Yeah, and one of the things we have to do pretty quickly is finalize the use table that we.
I can pull that up too. So our thought, Chris, you wanna just talk about what you, what our thought is on timing on that? I'll pull it up.
So, um. The thought is to, to put it up on our website right now so people can use it as a guide. Because they're not really changing anything in the narrative. Uh, we're just replacing it with this table. It makes it easier to understand. So, um.
Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up.
Where did it go?
And there are some, there are some changes because there are some things that just had left, been left unsaid. So there are some changes, there are some changes to it, but they're minimal.
Yep. So, so, for example, is one of the things is senior housing. Well, we're not gonna probably propose to change the. Bylaw to allow senior housing, so it won't be in the table for now.
But there, there are things like, um, you know, the, all the agricultural uses and the different classifications of those. That will be new and probably a little confusing to folks, but there are those type of things.
Yep, exactly.
So our thought was that, um, in that case, um, if we could kind of try to get a handle on that. At the next meeting, that that's something that we could kind of, we, we could get some closure on, so. That was the thought.
Yeah, one of the things I proposed is, um, uh, having a little, uh, guide to the table. So that you know what BA stands for, it's Board of Appeals, and maybe some, something for each of the residential districts. To give you a clue that the, the residence E district is two acres and whatever, you know, just so that.
Yeah, maybe, uh, fill those out, you know, actually give a description up there, I hear you.
Yep, so the idea is make the table be something.
More friendly.
If you see it on the website, it can help you quickly understand, uh, the, the uses. In you, for your property, because right now, if you're not familiar with this stuff. And then, um, the yellow, I believe, is, are the new sections.
Yeah.
Christina, you have your hand up.
Oh, Ron, I have a question. So just for Sarah and Chris, could you clarify? I think you said there's four documents. I only see two or three. There's possible articles, the summary of our surveys, and there's a possible articles that's dated. Yesterday. So, what's the map exactly? I just want to make sure I'm on the same page.
Yeah, we'll resend them. They're in one email. How's that sound? And, um, maybe we can, uh, actually, let me suggest that. Can, can I just suggest that we make a, a dated folder under zoning changes on the SharePoint drive? For these files, and then, um, we will email you when they have been posted there. So you're, yeah, so there are, right, we, we worked on three documents this week, this table. The, um, a, a map of which, uh, which Chris had already done, a map of what section goes to what new section. And then that proposed list of draft start for what articles would look.
Okay, what is the map, what is the map titled? Thank you.
I can just, hold on, I'll just pull it up.
I think it's approximate mapping of current zoning to proposed zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven twenty twenty one version.
Yeah. This is.
Is it in today's folder or is it in the recodification folder? I'm sorry, I was looking, I just don't see it.
I'm not sure where it is. Well, we will be sure that it gets put in the zoning changes folder, but this is what it's like.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good.
This isn't the right version. Anyway, it is what it looks like, so, don't, so it says what, you know, so four point one goes to four. Section four, this is, we, we, uh, you know, this is a new definition, so this isn't the right version. But, um, so you can see, we've identified various things and, and, uh, things that get deleted. Section seven becomes section eleven and so forth. So, um, that is a map, uh, and is an approximate, um. So.
Great, thanks.
We'll get those ver- latest versions. We, we have a lot of versions. Try to use detailed tables, but, um, I think that, whoa. Certainly, I think Chris and I are very open to a different approach if somebody has one, but this is what may seem, we've thought through it. For several hours, more than several.
No, at first glance, it looks great. I just, I don't think I've seen it. So I was just, just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
So, and August, I think it would be useful to get feedback from Alan, as Gary suggested. And to be prepared to go through that use table. And also, if we could be prepared to sort of signal our intent on sections. At least, uh, the definitions, section one and section three, which are pretty straightforward.
I, I think, I think we're fine with what you suggested, keeping it to, if that's what you're asking, I don't, I don't.
Any new definitions that, you know, we would just take the definition. No, but what any any new definitions that, you know, we would just take the definitions from version eight and plop them in and section two. So if there's any changes. And then we would eventually have to, of course, hold a public hearing, but at least between now and a public hearing, we don't have to really do much if we have sort of gotten consensus that that's the case. We could put them on the website and say, here is some proposed articles that we're that we're planning to do and people can read them through in their leisure, at their leisure.
This is Mary. Can I ask one question?
Yes, Mary.
Thanks, Sarah and Chris. This is this is awesome. Trying to trying to consolidate all this. Just a question when you were talking about definitions. So definitions in draft eight was inclusive of everything that had been discussed. So to the point that, you know, there's there's probably definitions that would be senior housing that we're not going to propose yet or other items were not proposed. Is there any issue with? And I'm sure I don't think there is, but adding definitions that aren't actually in the bylaw documents yet.
Yeah, that's a very good question. We don't think there is, but that's something we can get some opinion on.
Okay. But thank you again.
Yeah, just simply to to that end, the definitions need to be numbered with a so that they can be amended in the future. But that's easy.
All right, Laura, welcome. I saw you had your hand up. Did you want to make a comment?
Sorry, that was an error if I did. I apologize.
All right, sorry, all right. All right. Yeah, I think the next steps, I think we're kind of in agreement on your your proposed format. And I think like to like to move that to Alan, maybe Sarah, you and I and can discuss with Alan. I can set up a meeting in the next week or so.
Chris and Sue and I maybe can figure out how to test this out. There's a couple of other legal things that we identified as, you know, if you move section four point two, how does it to nine point two? How do all the subsections get renumbered? That's, for example, and all the references, the cross references. So that's the thing that we'll figure out among them. But I think those are solvable problems. But need but need solutions for the bylaw to not be a complete mess when we get done.
All right. Anything else on this topic?
So just can I just close out? If we will make sure that people have the the definitions, the sections one, two, and three, and this use table, and hopefully we can get kind of our intent on those. Also, if people for September can think about, besides this reordering and the administrative stuff, what are the issues we should take up? Then we'll have to figure out how to do that. If we can. Some of them might be much harder than you think, just because. So we'll talk through that with Alan, because I have some questions for him on that.
Um, Ron, my day.
Yes.
I just wanted to make, other than putting the definitions in a section, each definition does not have a subsection to it. So they're typically just in alphabetical order. So you don't actually need to number each definition. So if you'll look at, if you look at, if you look at section, the section that Mark did, section twelve, you'll notice that each one, yeah, each one does not have a separate number.
But think about trying to amend this in five years. And you want to amend, it would be so much easier to amend.
I think I think what would be very difficult to add numbers, because if they're out, if they're alphabetical and now we're numbered, then I think in the future, you would have a hard time sliding something in. I think that's why they're not numbered. So I don't I don't think we.
Whatever we can ask. That's a question that somebody's done it more than we have can.
Yeah.
I I think we want to make this as amendable in the future, whatever we can do to facilitate the ease of this in the future.
Yeah, agreed, great.
Good. Thanks, guys, for doing that. Helene was able to get the minutes in, what, Saturday, Helene? And I've gone through them, didn't have any questions with, did everyone get a chance to look at them? And any comments on them? I know they came in late.
Ron, I'm sorry, but I only got them in this afternoon.
I'm sorry, this afternoon.
I just had one small thing, small, very small. Under acknowledgement of correspondence after email chain from William Cross, I think you wanted to do et al, E T A L, not A T A L.
That's a big one. Oh, my goodness. Good for you. And, yep.
That's it.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
A motion to approve the minutes of July twelfth.
There are seconds as amended? Any, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Lee, Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Gary has left us. Any subcommittee and liaison updates?
Fincom had a meeting on the fifteenth. They talked about the regionalized dispatch to Middleton, the fund balance account, compost site, and ongoing town projects, but nothing really planning board related.
Thank you, Ms. Foley.
Ron, this is Christine. I have a question for Chris about the Affordable Housing Trust, maybe, or Chris or Sue, just if it's appropriate right now. Could someone explain the one to one requirement? It's that's, I might be off topic or just point me to the right regulation that I can read about it or just give me a little more information about that.
So my recollection is that the state had a demonstration program to allow state housing authorities to redevelop their properties. And there would be some state funding available to help do that. However, there was a requirement in this program that there be a one for one match of new units for the old public housing units. Now, I'm not sure the program still exists, actually, but that was what we used as a template for putting this together.
Okay.
So have you got anything else to add to that?
So what exactly was it called again? I'm sorry.
Oh, was I'm not sure what the technical name was of the State Demonstration Grant Program?
Yeah, I would have to look it up. And basically, it was a number that they wanted, they thought that amount of housing needed was would be needed to subsidize the redevelopment. So it was a high number.
It was both high and arbitrary, but that's what it was.
But that's the number that we're going forward with, right? That's what the number at the presentation was, so.
That was the assumption.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I wrote, there's a letter in your packet for Gary Russell that I would like to send out if there's any objections to what was written or any comments. I would hear them now. Otherwise, I would assume by acclamation that I can send it out.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody, any other matters anyone wants to bring up?
Welcome, Laura.
Yes.
That I was going to say.
So we're off for a month. Everyone enjoy the summer. And when we reconvene in August, late August, it will be at six thirty. We'll try to have a reorganization vote at that point with our with Laura present. I wanted to talk also at that meeting, you know, we we have our meetings at six thirty. That was mostly to accommodate Gary Russell because he was working. I I just thought it's you wanted to make it later or earlier, we can discuss that at this time. So that's why I didn't put any times on the September meeting dates. So.
Nothing about in-person meetings yet?
The the last I heard from Greg is that the I T equipment should be in by August. So stay tuned. Our August meeting may be in person. Possibility.
Ron, do we want to talk about the retreat technically and a date?
Yeah, so I was gonna bring this up at our next meeting. We are gonna have a retreat probably in September. And there's some things that are gonna happen before that. I was gonna bring this up since we're all here. This Vander's do, her woman is going, who has, I have her bio, and she's going to interview us, interview each member of the board. I'm not prepared to explain exactly what's what's gonna happen, but I think she's gonna talk to each of you individually, ask about five questions. She's gonna compile all the information. And then at the retreat, she's gonna come to our retreat and talk about, you know, board members' feelings, board members' your priorities and how we can work together. So stay tuned for that. That will all happen at our retreat and it'll probably be in early September.
I just thought maybe we should talk about some dates because, you know, a month from now, I think the world's gonna be open and people's schedules are gonna get a little crazy. So maybe.
Well, yeah, the dates will be, the dates will be depend on when she gets done with her. So I haven't picked a date. I'm thinking a Saturday morning is my feeling, but I don't know. I'll leave that up to the board.
I'm just, I probably have a lot of commitments already on Saturdays in September and October, so.
We'll we'll figure out a date when the whole board is together. And whenever it is, if it's, you know, Tuesday night or Monday night or whatever. Or whenever we can all get together, we'll figure out a date. But I do, I do request that we have a hundred percent attendance at this, so. That will be, so it will be important to set a date. Correct. I agree with you. So we'll think about, we'll we'll come, we'll come together and get a date when next meeting. I mean, if you have some dates in mind. You know, a day of the week that's better than another, you know, what's bringing to the table next meeting. Looking at the calendar here.
I think a doodle pool might be a good idea.
Okay, yeah, I'm not.
I do share Christine's Saturday mornings are kind of precious.
Okay. So we'll do a doodle pool. Good idea.
Laura's got her hand up.
Yeah, hi, Ron.
Yes, Laura.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to make mention of the fact of the next meeting date is when I'm away. So the planning board meeting, so I have vacation in August.
No, you're already?
Oh, sorry. I'm not under. So just to head up.
Okay.
Unless the next meeting is on the ninth, when.
Can we call a gar?
Not too late. If you don't like it.
I don't know. We could move it to the ninth. I don't know.
Okay, well, I'm away.
You're away.
I'm away, yeah, the kind of week of the sixteenth and the twenty third, not available for meeting those weeks.
Helene, are you expecting any applications on those dates already?
Yes. We are expecting an an application from Timothy Collins on his driveway for August twenty third. That's it.
Do we want to move it? Do we want to move it to the ninth?
I suggest we do procedural matters on August twenty third and not do to and keep it short and then keep substantive matters for the next meeting, perhaps. That that's a thought to keep. So we don't, if members of the public have plans that they want to submit and and if they submit them, we have to act on the A if they're in ours within a certain amount of time, right? Somebody submits.
Yeah. All right, so we'll have a short meeting on the twenty third, so you'll even, we'll even have more of a break, but it's not a break. We should be working on that recodification stuff. So.
Okay.
All right, guys. Thanks. Sorry it went so long. Well, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, maybe seconded, Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Lucio?
She says yes.
Okay, Ms. Foley.
I'm sorry. I didn't know you were waiting for me. Yes, sure.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
And Mr. Olney?
Yes.
And Chair says yes. Okay, have a good summer.
Thanks, Ron. You too.
See you.
Bye all. Thank you.
Bye all.
Bye bye.